Good morning.
Good morning.
I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Preston County Commission. Today is April nineteenth, two thousand twenty-two at nine thirty. And we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Let the record show that all three commissioners are present. Commissioner Smith, Commissioner Price, Commissioner Stone. I'd like to have a motion to review and pay the bills.
Move, we go. Pay the bills that are properly presented and.
I'll second them.
And properly moved and seconded to pay the bills as they have been reviewed and approved. Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Yes. All right, brings us to our assessor's office. What's our assessor, Connie Purman? What's the tax corrections?
We do have some tax corrections this morning in the amount of six hundred and ninety-seven dollars and twelve cents for a variety of incorrect assessments, taxpayer errors, complaints, clerical errors.
And make sure at this time that we approve this tax correction list. Say.
And properly moved and seconded to approve the tax correction list in the amount of six hundred and ninety-seven dollars and twelve cents as it's been presented by the assessor and approved. Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, um. Move on to our nine thirty-one appointment. Um, the first thing we will take care of is officially setting the twenty-two, twenty-three tax levy rates.
Yes, ma'am, if you would, you have two, your regular levy and then your excess levy. So just if you would just read what we have set the levy rates. This is the levy rate has gone increased. It's at the maximum levy rate, which it's been for many years now.
Okay. All right, current year, class one, fourteen point three. Class two, well, that was personal property, class two real estate, twenty-eight point six. Class three, real estate, fifty-seven point two. Class four, real estate, fifty-seven point two. And that is for the regular current expense levy. Do we have to do separate motions to approve these?
I don't believe so.
Okay, all right. Yep. And then, uh, current year, class one, personal property, one point one eight. Class two, real estate, two point three six. Class three, real estate, four point seven two. Class four, real estate, four point seven two.
That's for the fire levy.
Correct, for the fire levy.
And then in the others, like with the Board of Education.
They said their own levy rates, right?
We approve these levy rates for the ensuing year twenty-two, twenty-three.
I'll second that.
Been properly moved and seconded to approve the current, uh, regular expense levy rate and the excess levy rate for two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three. Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Yes. All right, move on to our next appointment with Rochelle Lehman, the Family Resource Network, with a proclamation for Child Abuse Prevention Month. Good morning.
Read that. Yes. It is Child Abuse Prevention Month, and we ask the commission to proclaim that for our county.
Whereas children are key to the county and the state's future success, prosperity, and quality of life. Whereas children are our most valuable resource, they're also most vulnerable. Whereas preventing child abuse and neglect is a community responsibility. That depends on involvement from all people throughout the community. And whereas child abuse and neglect can be prevented by supporting and strengthening West Virginia's families, thus preventing the far-reaching effects of maltreatment, providing the opportunity for children to develop healthy, trusted family bonds, and consequently building the foundation of communities. Whereas we must come together as partners so that the voices of our children are heard by all, and our community extends a helping hand to children and families in need. Whereas by providing a safe and nurturing environment for our children free of violence, abuse, and neglect, we can ensure the West Virginia's children will reach their full potential as the next generation of leaders helping to secure the future of this state and nation. Now therefore, the Preston County Commission does hereby proclaim April twenty-twenty-two as Child Abuse Prevention Month in Preston County and encourages all citizens to help prevent the abuse and neglect of children. I move that we so proclaim.
Thank you very much.
I'll second that.
It's been properly moved and seconded to proclaim April as Child Abuse Prevention Month. Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Yes.
Well, thank you. It's a tough job, isn't it?
It is, I mean, I don't specifically work directly with the children, but I know we had an Easter egg hunt down in Roseburg this weekend and the cluster of kids was down there. And they have just like a visual setup with two little bases, and they had like Sour Punch Kids in one to recognize like all the kids in foster care. And then they had just a few little mints in a second base to represent how many volunteers they have. And it's just way outnumbered. How many foster kids we have in our county or state. Thank you guys very much.
Thanks for what you do.
Thank you.
All right, moving along to our next appointment with Ladina Teets from Farmland Protection with some updates.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. Happy spring. Uh, wanted to let you know that we now have eight farms under farmland protection. We're eleven hundred and eight acres. Uh, we are working on three at this time. One, we're having some title, uh, search issues, so it's a little going slower than the other two. I need to, I just realized I had not asked you to vote on two of them. One would be the Hansel Teets Farm on the Aurora Pike at the Y between Fox Road and Aurora. Their heirs would like to put that in in honor of them. And the other one would be a Bill Smith. Bill Stone, excuse me, Bill Stone, and it is the former, um, Paul Beasley Farm, so we think that is good recognition there too, because Paul was quite a leader in the farming community. We also have two board members who will be going off. They are Art Mauser and Carrie C., and both would like to go back on. Art is kind of pending the election. Um, if he wins, no problem. If he loses, uh, it would be Ed Utterback, so we kind of have to wait till after election, but we do need you to vote on those. We have plenty of money, we thank you very much for that. We have over seven hundred thousand that we can use at this time. And we sincerely want to thank you guys for supporting us the way you do, because you guys have been great and we thank you very much. Any questions?
Do we have to vote on something?
Yes, you'll need to vote on the two board members to renew the terms. And that we go ahead and move on the process for the Teets Farm and Stone Farm.
Do you need the two farms individual?
Yeah, yes, yeah, because one's in Kingwood out here on Dinkin Burger and the other's in Aurora. So, but the board members, you might want to wait until after election.
We can put that on the agenda a couple of weeks after.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, because their terms don't start till the end of June.
Right.
We have plenty of time, so we just wait till after election and do it.
But I thought I wouldn't take your time twice, I was wrong.
Well, my motion would be to, as the commission, to support the farmland protection and, uh, the, uh, farm of Hansel Teets, which is in the Aurora area, to be brought under the care of farmland protection.
I'll second that.
Been properly moved and seconded to authorize the approval of the Aurora Farm of Hansel and Melton Teets on the Aurora Pike, uh, to come into farmland protection. Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you.
I, uh, then will have a motion to, uh, bring the farm, which is outside of Kingwood owned by Bill Stone, the late Paul Beasley Farm off Dinkin Burger Road, to be brought into care of the, uh, farmland protection in Preston County.
I'll second that.
It's been, I'm going to not vote on this. It's been properly moved and seconded to authorize farmland protection to move forward with the easement on the Bill Stone Farm off of the Dinkin Burger Road. Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Thank you very much. If there are no other questions?
What's next?
Well, we're, every time somebody brings an application, and as long as you guys keep supporting us, we're gonna probably do our due diligence and try to put an easement on it. We don't get, I mean, it's not like we get hundreds of applications. We get maybe two a year. And it has picked up, because we used to get one every two or three years. So, um, if they've got their mineral rights, if they have, uh, don't have a lease, and everybody agrees, we're happy to take them on and see what we can do.
Yeah, then you have to go through the process of making that.
Yeah, and we usually try to do it within a year to eighteen months, and we've been very successful with that, except for the, um, Stembel property, which has a lot of title issues that were just kind of not documented and recorded at the courthouse and done. So that has really slowed, of course, COVID and the surveyor and, you know, it started right as COVID happened and it's just been a long process.
Just as a side note, I was on the commission when we approved farmland protection. And there were a lot of questions and a lot of doubts and a lot of the counties that didn't do it, but I think it's been, I think it's been a good thing that people would know that dotted here and there around the county will be this farmland if there would be the influx of a lot of development.
We're still in the first generation, we have not gone to the second generation, but the whole goal is if someone wants a farm, these farms, since we are paying them money to sell them at a lower rate as agriculture, that there will be opportunity for young people to buy them at a agricultural rate. The only problem is agricultural rates are going up and are, I mean, between the fair market value and the agricultural value is getting closer. So we're paying less for these easements, but, you know, they can't charge a million dollars now for a farm if it's totally agricultural, so.
So how long has it been?
Uh, we started this in June of two thousand four. So we're fifteen years.
Almost, yeah.
So, yeah.
And just for the record, for anyone, um, the reason I did abstain from the vote on the Stone Farm, they're not directly related to me, but it is my hus- my husband, my uncle's, my husband's uncle by marriage, so just for, just to stay out of it.
Well, and that's why I said.
Transgender.
Transgender. That's also why I said that if Art loses, because my husband is running for that position too, then Ed Utterback will be on it, because you're husband. Not my husband, number one, I don't want him on my board. I hope he wins, because I don't want him on my board, and number two, I don't want a public interest, so that's why Ed Utterback will be going on.
Hundred percent transgender.
That's right. This county is too connected, what can I say?
Thank you, Ladina.
Thank you.
The Farmland Protection Board is actually one of the ones I truly, um, was, I enjoy serving on multiple boards, but I, farming is near and dear to me and observing farmland in the county is something that.
Well, I have to say, it's a wonderful job and I have enjoyed working with the county commission too.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You've done a fantastic job.
All right, we are just one minute behind on how we managed to be behind, then get caught up and barely behind, but we'll move on with, uh, with, well, please, with Sarah Serino and WFW representatives, um, giving us a presentation for the Veterans Memorial Plaza.
If we, if we could, if you all remember that we have a committee, uh, made out, uh, because Lenny is here today, that have been working on a conceptual design for, um, not only the veterans memorial, but a plaza in its totality. So, uh, of course, Sarah is, uh, working with us as a architect on this project. Uh, we have Bob Seifel here with us today, who is from Preston County Historical Society, um, Jim Savage, who is, uh, BFW, and I apologize.
Vietnam Veterans Group, Preston County.
And Bill Benson, same, right, Bill, the veterans group, uh, Vietnam Veterans. So what we want to present to you today is a two-phase idea, and Sarah has done a great job of giving you visuals on this. The first is actually to complete what was started by the Vietnam veterans, which is to include a brick walkway, uh, up, which has the bricks that are engraved with different names from veterans. And then a second phase would be an entire plaza to support veterans of all wars. So, uh, I did prepare for you a packet of information that Sarah's going to go over with you. And then after we've done the presentation, we'd like to talk to you about some, um, contractual agreements we'd like the, uh, commission to entertain. Also, Commissioner Stone is on the committee, as well as Karen Coroco from the city of Kingwood. Am I missing anybody?
Bill Shockey.
Bill Shockey from Main Street, Kingwood.
Thank you, commissioners, good morning, everybody. Uh, Kathy did an excellent job, I think, of summarizing the project. So, uh, I'm a landscape architect, I work locally here in the county, and, um, the project involves a two-phase approach, at least at this point, that's how we're looking at it. And it will involve the green space on this front corner of the courthouse lawn. The first phase, as Kathy mentioned, will be to incorporate a brick, memorial brick walk using, uh, existing bricks from the veterans, Kingwood Veterans Memorial, right up here.
Hillary Brex.
In front of Hillary Brex Law Firm, yeah. Uh, there's a area there where there's brick papers. The Vietnam Veterans Organization is taking those bricks and having them engraved. And, uh, with, they're having the existing bricks that are named reengraved, is that correct?
No, they're being moved, it's all, they're in good shape.
Those are.
Yeah, because you were cleaning them off the other day, I saw you guys cleaning them the other day, so, yeah.
They're in good shape.
And then the additional bricks, they are getting additional bricks and doing a fundraiser to support the purchase of the bricks, the additional bricks needed for this project. They're managing that and they're adding, so there'll be new names added to that, and they'll be incorporated in this walk that you can see in this picture. So you've got the existing Veterans Memorial Monument, and that brick walk will be very wide. And I'll go a couple feet past the monument on each side, uh, and lead from the public sidewalk up to that. So that is the incorporation of phase one. And that is, they're actively working on the fundraising for the brick and moving forward very quickly with that. And then the goal is to have that installed this summer, and then phase one will be complete. Phase two involves a broader project, uh, that would involve an open plaza to be able to have, gathering? Gathering services of any kind, public space, that would allow at least a hundred people to be able to comfortably gather in that space. Uh, it will incorporate the existing cannon, the existing statue. We will move, the intent is to move the historic courthouse bell around and into that plaza space. And also, the, there is a veterans memorial monument also on the lawn. It will stay on site, but it will be relocated. Um, and I believe there is a Desert Storm monument on the other side, New York Sheriff's Office. That will also be incorporated into the green space, uh, in the green area around this plaza.
So this is Price Street over here, right?
Yeah, Price Street here.
Over here, right there.
Yep, and if, try not to get in my way here. This would be to orient you, the monument, the veteran, the Vietnam monument, and the brick walk done in phase one. Uh, this is the existing wall along Price Street. And it would basically go then from this main street sidewalk across to the courthouse steps and up to the walk adjacent to the courthouse. So it would just incorporate that in green space. It will involve cutting in about the elevation of the, where the monuments and the cannons sit, and there'll be a retaining wall that will open up that space to a more plaza. And again, this is in the very preliminary and conceptual stages, so there's a lot of detail and adjustment that will, that the committee is gonna work through. But the initial concept is that back wall will actually act as a sign for the plaza and have architectural lettering, um, some kind to name the memorial space or the plaza space. And then the flagpole would get relocated as well. And along the front, towards facing Price Street, again, conceptually, the idea is to have, a monument for every branch of the military that would be lit and face outward as a, again, to, where the memorial walk is allowing the naming of individual veterans, this would be all-inclusive. There is an idea that we could add additional brick naming in the new plaza, but that's again conceptual and kind of to be determined as, as the committee sees fit for that and cost gets worked through. There are kind of any questions about that initially?
That's attractive, I appreciate the fact that the brick walkway can move forward and then everything would be.
Yep, would, and then from a, at a different timeline. Definitely.
Definitely was the goal of the committee to make sure that we, uh, sell through the project that the Vietnam veterans have initiated and started to get that walkway, um, completed up to their monument for a couple reasons. Um, to keep, it's a beautiful monument and people should be able to go up without disturbing the lawn and. So that will be wonderful with how they have come up with the idea to do that, so.
And this summer is when you guys hope to?
Yes.
Have that.
It'll be after June.
We're hoping June.
Looking at courthouse operations over here and, and our, we have a quote from Jennings, to do the work, and he's pretty flexible, and he's looking at maybe five days total to pull the bricks out of the existing location, replace them with blanks, move those two hundred and twenty along with what we have sold, and we're looking at maybe three hundred, even four hundred total with names on them, which will end up being with the current design, it'll be about two to one ratio, which will make them look really, really good. But he's very flexible on his, his schedule, and we, as Vietnam veterans, we have made, uh, we've got a quote for the brick, we'll probably pick them up next week. We've got the money to pay for them, so we'll have the brick in Kingwood by the end of next week, so they'll be ready to be used. So what we're dealing with then is the fee for Jennings. He takes, he wants the job, his quote is eight thousand dollars, five days' work. So with the other organizations, we need to know who's gonna kick in what.
Well, I think we're here on a, in your package, you'll also see that, um, uh, Sarah's willing to do the project management on this project, just, it is specialized. Uh, this isn't, I'm glad that we have a local guy who's interested in putting the papers in, because it does require, um, to be very specific, we need to know since we're inviting people on that it meets all AD eight requirements. I think it's really important that we have someone with the skill level of Sarah to oversee that. So you have a couple things in your pocket for consideration. Uh, we have three items for you today. One is, you'll see that we, the plant material that is in the statue, which you can see on the, um, right here, this, this, this greenery is attached with a price for you. Uh, and also the project management to be done by Sarah. I think the total amount of that, one is for the plant, I believe about thirteen, and hers is about twenty-five. So those are two things, it's very important that, um, uh, we have the, that we're requesting that the county commission pick up those costs. Now also, on the construction end, you know, the veterans are picking up all the cost of brick, uh, they're picking up all the cost of the engraving, uh, they've been working on that very hard. Uh, we did a concept that we knew exactly how many, um, they're gonna cut off their sale date, if I remember, uh, by June one, so that we know exactly. We're hoping it's about a two to one, but it may be a little bit different than that, so we need to have time between the time they stop and we know, so that we could get it into the design in the appropriate fashion. Um, and Sarah, of course, would help with that as well. So, um, that eight thousand dollar cost, uh, I think today what we want to, uh, ask, request for is with the commission to move forward with, uh, uh, the approval of the plant material that would be put with the Vietnam Veterans Memorial, as well as, uh, the oversight by Stony.
Studio and Stony.
Studio, okay, it's Sarah Swedell. So that's important. And also, I think it's important that we also ask the commission to consider picking up a portion of the, either because it's on courthouse lawn, perhaps the entire construction cost or a portion of the construction cost. We may want to reach out to a couple of other groups that have shown interest in that, and of course, that would be helpful. But in order for us to meet the mark that they're asking for, it would be helpful if the commission would consider all the costs.
Well, I certainly don't have a problem with that, um, it's really in the grand scheme of things, um, if not that much. And where are we looking at pulling those funds from, where can we?
I think you can take that, uh, you have a couple of locations, uh, you have, uh, contributions internally that we can move to external, and also, I believe you still have some funding in Cold Severance. You still have CARES funding, uh, so, uh, I believe I'm gonna round it up and say it's around thirteen thousand. I, that's not adding it up exactly, but I'd say that that's what you're looking for.
Thirteen thousand, thirteen hundred.
Thirteen thousand total.
Total.
Thirteen thousand.
That's the construction cost of Jennings, which is under the threshold to bid.
Okay.
And that's about eight, then you have about twenty-five hundred or?
It's twenty-five fifty.
Twenty-five fifty, so if you want to do the math, Commissioner, you can have an exact number, but it would be the plant by, it would be Sarah's. So twelve ninety, two fifty, about thirteen thousand. So 1290, 250, about 13,000. Yes, yes, sir.
1300. Yeah. So total, 13,000.
13,000 to do everything. And in order for it to move forward, and in order for, I believe that the Vietnam veterans have a very special program planned. We'd like to get that done. It does, we want to make sure it's in good shape before anyone walks on it. So, so that's going to take a little bit.
I, I think what we should do, if everyone is in favor, would be to just authorize or approve a budget of 13,000 because that will give us a little bit more than.
That's actually more than is needed.
Than is needed.
You said 8,000 for him?
Yes.
Okay. Right now, that, that would bring it to just, I mean, look at 1300 and all that.
That may command a touch less because he was questioning some of the elevation on the lower side. He may have to add material. If he doesn't have to add that because of the ADA.
It's always best to be on the higher side and have it coming lower.
High side.
But right now, it's 11,850.
Yeah, I think 13 is a pretty much.
Okay. Then a motion would be to approve an initial budget of 13,000 for the Vietnam Veteran Brick Project.
Phase One.
Phase One. I will second that.
It's been properly moved and seconded to approve a $13,000 budget for the memorial walk for the Vietnam Veterans Memorial Phase One Project as, to be overseen by Studio on Stony Run and the veterans in our committee. And so we will move forward with that with a vote. Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Yes.
Also, since we do have a couple of others might be interested in contributing, I'll certainly reach out to them. So our, our budget is still good. If they want to contribute, that'll help us out.
That'd be great.
But we can move forward. Correct?
Yep.
Oh, one, one very good thing is, since we already have the memorial, SHPO does not have to, do not have to go through a 106 review again.
And certainly appreciate your work, Kathy, and the veterans, all the work that you have done in trying to make us all understand. We can't come around the table and brainstorm to come to the best idea, then there's no use to have a committee, right?
I, I would like one other authorization for the committee to continue to meet, sorry, because we do have a Phase One. We already have a concept. I think that it, it will be, it will be enticing when we get this project done and people might be able to visualize the rest of it. So with no objection to the commission, I'd like the committee to continue to work through a Phase Two project. We may need to modify it a little bit. We want to still brainstorm a little bit about what's going on. So we continue to do our work with permission of the commission.
I, I think that's great. I mean, for anyone that's on the committee currently opposed to still getting together to look at ideas.
I think we're all good, right?
Sure.
All right, perfect. Everyone good?
We'd certainly like, we'd certainly like to thank the commission for all your support. We think it would be quite an asset to the county and to the lawn. We, we, we will get it done this summer.
The people's place. Yes, yes.
If I may, just with this vote, does that mean that we can go ahead and contact Jennings, get him started?
Yeah, just coordinate everything with Kathy and we'll, we'll move forward. Yeah.
Because she's waiting for a phone call.
With the dates that we have set in place that.
Yes, sir. I, I think that now that the commission is taking on the budget, that the, the payments will come from the county commission. So I will need to meet with Mr. Jennings just to, we'll just need some paperwork information from Mr. Jennings. I think we've worked with him in the past, but we just need stuff.
We'll, we'll give him a call, tell him he's got the job and then.
That's correct.
We're on the calendar for, we're on the calendar for June, so now whether it be the end of June or whatever. And then the other aspects will be, once we start this project, there's going to be a renewed interest in selling bricks or buying bricks, I should say. So we're going to end up somewhere down the line with an, with an annual, like we talked with committee, maybe doing an annual addition to the project.
I was going to ask you about that because I know it's, it progresses. People will probably want to buy.
I mean, just this little, just this little project we got the other day by cleaning has sparked, you know, had sparked interest because people didn't know that all that stuff was there.
Sure. And I think, I think the best way to work through that is, you know, when you guys have your meetings through the committee, we need to just set up something because truly, once you have your initial design done with your memorial, I don't know that we really want to disturb that construction. So maybe looking at the Phase Two and see the timeline, you know, if that's something that is moving along quickly, then maybe your group or other groups that would want to initiate the, the process of selling bricks again to do phased projects in the new project. Maybe, you know, that's something that the committee can work through.
I can only see, because the way that, correct me if I'm wrong, the way that looks on there, on the Phase Two part behind, between the courthouse and Price Street, it looks like it's brick there.
It is.
So the, my, is the plan, and I mean, like I said, correct me if I'm wrong, the plan, and I mean, because as future events happen and people want to buy more bricks, would those be the ones that would be taken out and replaced with memorial brick as the case may be? Because that way you have less disturbance, you know what I mean? I, I don't know. That's what I'm asking.
That's the exact concept.
Something that can be looked at. Or the additional bricks to be put in, into Phase Two and done in that location.
Well, that's what I mean. That's what I'm saying. With Phase Two.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
You got to think about, this is not, this is not going to be stacked, okay? Every year, and God knows what happens in the future, my crystal ball doesn't work and no one else's does, but I can tell you, you're going to have, you know this, you're going to have more veterans, families who want to buy bricks later on, years and years and years and years and years from now.
Sure.
And that, that in my head would be the concept, would be the replace a brick, you know, somebody buys a brick, you take one of the bricks out of there, put their name brick in, you know, and then you just have spare bricks, but that's fine. You only get those engraved later.
That's what our plan is to have spare bricks at the engraver, you know. We, our initial concept was, we thought, I was thinking 60, 80, he was thinking 100. We're at 189 right now and I'm picking up.
I knew you were doing real well.
And I'm picking up another 50 tomorrow. So we're in, that's additional. So we're in the 240 range. We're already taking 220, 230 out because I found some numbers the other day. We was believing that my numbers went up a little bit. But we're going to be in the 500 range where we were talking.
I see this going on, you know, you know, families want to honor, you know, a family member who's a veteran and they're going to buy a brick, you know. If you do this every year, they'll continue to buy it forever. I mean, I mean, in reality, see, so.
See how the first year goes. Like I say, the only thing I worry about is the first push whenever we do, when we get destruction.
Oh, yeah.
We're going to see the first one. But we should have plenty of room in our project to maybe in the fall, you know, make it, make an addition. And then after that, hopefully it'll slow down. But that'll be something that we can deal with.
Yeah. I mean, I can just see them trickling in every year, you know, a few here, a few there, dozen, a dozen, a dozen, a dozen.
Yes. The bricks are, in Sarah's design, the concept is so that it's completed and the bricks can come out and others can go in. And that really lends to also, if a brick is ever damaged, to be able to replace it easily. So, yes, yes, that's, definitely the concept in the project. And we also have a little other business we have to take care of. We need motions.
We want to, we have a proposal from Jennings Garden Center in the amount of $8,000. I've asked that the president could authorize to sign for the Vietnam Memorial Walk.
So who? I will second that.
It's been properly moved and seconded to authorize the president to sign, to sign the proposal from Jennings Garden Center in the amount of $8,000. Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Yes. Just at the bottom or standing?
I just saw, you can do it either way. The other item is, we want to accept the contract with Studio on Stony Run for the proposal and authorization for landscape architectural services for the brick Veterans Memorial Walk project in the amount of maximum expenditure, not to exceed $2,550, as well as the cost estimate of $1,300 for the landscape plant material. I'd ask the president to authorize to sign.
Mm-hmm. Say it.
We can will initial this or sign it.
It's been properly moved and seconded to authorize the president to sign the cost associated with Studio on Stony Run in the amount of, for the combined cost of 1,300 and 2,550 dollars for Studio on Stony Run. Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Yes.
You have the email. You'll have the email. I'll email you, office as well.
Very good.
Thank you. All right.
I have one more.
Sarah?
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Yes.
One more question, please. If, or one more statement. I talked to Bill Shockey yesterday. The monument, that he's talking about, the Paul Sumter Monument?
Yes.
All right. They are not willing to move it.
So it's going to stay where it's located?
So it's going to stay. We're going to work around it. Any, the only thing we're taking out will be the flag holders that are in there. Hillary's, we've already talked to her about that. So we'll take, when we take out our stuff, because he's talking about probably the simplest way to do this is just take the big row out and just kind of smooth it, just lay everything back in one shot because it's going to be, we're going to be moving over a third of them anyhow. So it just, it's easier for him. I don't care how you do it, you know. But anyhow, the line will stay there, which is, that and the lighting for, we're going to leave that stuff alone.
Okay.
And then they can deal with that later. That's, we're not our, you know, we're not taking responsibility for them, let them have it. And we're just want our, you know, get what we can out of it. And then he said something about it was going to go through a project later or something.
Okay.
Whatever.
One of the neat things about the plaza that we didn't mention was the kiosk. And in your drawings that I provided for you, there's a kiosk. And I want Sarah to, to just tell you a little bit about that because it's really neat.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I didn't bring that up. I didn't want to.
No, I'll take on.
Yeah. So part of Phase Two and a part of the vision that we, that the committee has discussed is, because we can't put a monument for every war that's passed and also anticipate the future, there just isn't enough space. So there, that alluded to the, the open area concept for the, for the plaza. But there are so many memorials around our county in various communities and locations, even not in communities and at VFWs. We discussed the idea of having a map and, and the kiosk would, at the plaza would, it would be a tour basically. This could be promoted through the tourism department, through Parks and Rec, through the county, I mean, through the veterans groups. And, you know, anybody interested, county residents, anybody interested, you could have memorial drives set. And so not only would you be opening up the entire county to the potential visitor route that would see each of these monuments and memorials that don't necessarily get a lot of attention right now, you would be drawing attention to those. And you would also be getting people out into those communities to go to those Quick Mart's, go to those restaurants, and see the county in a larger way, which I think is good on all fronts. So that kiosk would be the, would be the information center to that larger expansion of a Preston County Veterans Memorial. It would be the plaza and the county. So that's the short version of that, yes.
And I think it's a wonderful concept because there are several things already in place that people and organizations have a lot of time and attention and detail into.
And I think we, we also discussed, again, there are some monuments and memorials for wars or conflicts and that, that maybe haven't been addressed. So if the veterans groups find that this happens, that they may take it upon themselves, and I think that's part of the encouragement, is communities and groups may take it on themselves to find a way to represent those places that aren't going to be located here or haven't been represented elsewhere and, and have that done and added to the map.
Correct. And I believe in the Phase Two project, the pillars will actually say on the each branch of our military.
Yes, they would.
Yeah.
And, and honor each branch. And then the kiosk would be.
Exactly. And the back of the pillar, I had mentioned a possibility to be able to hang wreaths or flags on the back for specific events. So that's the, that's the vision.
It's a great concept. If we can come up with the funding, that would be wonderful.
So, well, another proactive thing we could do, because we have permission to continue with the committee, is for me to alert SHPO that this is something that's futuristic and in a plan, so that if they see anything upfront that we might need to address or change, we can do that in a planning process rather than have it modified on the back.
Yeah, definitely. Definitely. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioners.
All right. At this time, we're going to move forward with Dewayne Hamilton, OEM 911, with a presentation for Dispatcher of the Year.
Good morning.
Good morning, morning.
We're here today to, you know, last week was the Dispatcher's Week, you know, I've mentioned it. Every year, we pick a, one of our employees for Dispatcher Year, our administrative staff here, they're the ones that pick it up, employees themselves. We usually look for somebody that's excelled as a dispatcher and/or gives some kind of contribution to the center. It's extraordinary. The war this year goes in, in division, we was always, always has a good outlook, outlook-oriented job and gets her off to make sure the callers are taken care of. Her sunny, caring personality makes her a good working environment. Of course, when adversity strikes from a bad call, she always seems to keep her, keep everyone smiling. So she's our little ray of sunshine, you know. A lot of what these guys deal with are, you know, it's not always pleasant. People don't call just because they're calling and say, hey, had a great day. So, you know, it's nice to have somebody like her. Always has a little bit of sunshine about whatever happens. She also helps out in whatever role she's needed to, to cover shifts or whatever. And she's been really good about that. She's been here since July 1, 2019. But this year's award for Dispatcher Year goes to lady say.
Great.
And she also, we haven't got her awarded yet, but we have a jacket for her, but she will be wearing, it says Dispatcher Year on the back of it and all that.
Can we get her picture?
Huh?
Can we get her picture?
Everybody up here.
Yep.
What do you want? Oh, question.
Are you going to get in front of the?
The best place to do it, you think, are up here?
Mary has it. Mary has it.
Hold on, you guys in the picture. Come on, next one. Does, squeeze everybody in.
Good morning.
You're in the center.
You asked her what she called it.
Grandpa.
Grandpa. That's right.
That's right. Everybody's grandma.
Just put her in, this people cut you out, you know? Why? Come on, everybody wants.
Okay. Thank you.
Morning.
You relax like a layer.
I like it. It keeps me in combed.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
She takes good care of the responders out there. She really does.
Well, and if you would see how cute her little girl is. I had the opportunity to meet her at their little cookout that I'm on one did for their dispatchers last week in the evening. Her little girl's so cute and I can just see why she always has that little positive attitude.
She's friends with my kids and grandkids. And so along with all of them, she calls me granddaddy. So I'll link to the mom on one side. Hey, granddaddy, how you doing?
All right. Approval of the minutes. We need a motion.
I'm here this time for the minutes for March 29th, March 31st, and special, for the special session, and also for April 1st, and the continuing of that special session.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded to approve the minutes listed. Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Yes.
This time I'd like to make a motion that we dispense with the reading of the PIBs and accept them in the record for April 7th through 13th.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded to dispense with the readings of proceedings and vacation, April 7th through April 13th, and enter them into record. Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Yes.
We have these estate settlements from the county court. I move that these be approved, Bassadella, Piper, and Sanders.
I'll second that.
It's been properly moved and seconded to approve the estate settlements for April 4th through April 6th, 2022, for Bassadella, Piper, and Sanders. Commissioner Smith, or Price?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Yes.
At this time, I'd like to make a motion for the full and complete auxiliary administration of the estate of Paul Vincent Leach and appointment of the Sheriff of Preston County as the auxiliary administrator.
Sure.
It's been properly moved and seconded for the full and complete auxiliary administration of the estate of Paul Vincent Leach dated March 29th, 2022, to the Sheriff of Preston County. Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Yes. All right. Anything for CARES funding?
Justin's working on that AED stuff for us. He's getting some quotes. He's having an issue with it. So.
Yeah, talk with him.
Once he has the quotes, we should be able to move forward and get those for.
Anything else? All right. Brings us to our new business, and that starts with our administrator support. And I guess one other, I had a four new business is welcoming Joe LaRue.
Yeah, he's on the job running.
I think that traditionally, the new employees, especially in the maintenance department, have a speech.
He has one.
I thought I was by a lunching room there.
Well, we, you know.
Maybe you have a prephrase, haven't you?
Yeah. Or lunching room. Yeah.
Okay. The first item I have for you is request for reimbursement for the March 2020 CEAP grant for community corrections in the amount of $15,081.33. I'd ask that the President be authorized to sign.
I move, I make, I'm making a motion this time that we offer the President to sign this request for reimbursement of CEAP grant.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded to authorize the President to sign the request for reimbursement for the CEAP grant in the amount of $15,081.33. Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Yes.
Well, I'd like to take C before B. Update on your lead broadband grants. The county commission has earmarked 1.6 plus million dollars for matching funds for the lead broadband grants. We had a webinar yesterday with the state of West Virginia. I have, I'm preparing a contractual agreement between the county commission and the Economic Development Authority, who is actually our partner, partnering with the private enterprise, which is Prodigy Digital Connections. I, I hope to have that done and to Jay and ready for the state by April 30th. And that project, we are waiting on two notices. You can notice to proceed on design, and then you notice to proceed on construction. So they didn't have in their budgeting document, they did not have a place for matching money. I asked them to modify their document to, so that we could show clearly. I wanted to make sure that all the line items were approved for matching funds. So it was a great meeting. I think that we're on the verge of moving forward. It's, it's a lot, it's a lot of moving parts. And also, one of the concerns that was expressed is delay time caused on fiber and other products. So it could be the modification, the grant, I think the grant date is April 1. And we may have, traditionally, you cannot use any matching funds for any materials that are bought prior to the grant date. However, in this particular case, we may need to pick up some existing fiber in stock. So we're waiting for permission on that. So we're getting closer for that project to begin and our portion to, to move forward. So just wanted to give you an update on that. Any questions on that? I'll have more information for you as you go along. We will not expend any funds until we get a notice to proceed design, which is engineering and construction.
A lot of people.
Anxious.
Anxious.
Yeah. Yeah.
And, and almost, I mean, that should touch everybody around the county.
Well, you know, I, I was just really impressed with the process of that, that the parties that were at the table yesterday, there was Chipo at the table, you know, they're involved in this project as well because of where the things are being placed. So you have the state, you had Prodigy and his staff and, and well-oiled machine, I would say, you know, there's a lot of Department of Highways permitting. It's, it's a big project. So it's, it's wonderful to see a Preston County company as engaged in a large project like this. This, I think altogether, we have two grants, and they're multimillion dollar projects. So it, it's good news for Preston County and will benefit our county very much. The next item I have is update on our maintenance projects. And I will tell you that Joe started yesterday. It's a delight to have him. We've certainly been brainstorming a lot about a lot of things. We spent yesterday basically on housekeeping matters, just getting Joe set up and, and we, we talked about projects. We do have a plan. He's going to work with Mark this afternoon and, and get a look at the buildings and the license and the credentialing he has for you all is, I don't know, wish I had a long time ago. So anyway, I, I think it'll be great. And I wanted him to come forward and, and tell you, we did talk about some interesting things, I think, that, that will really benefit your department. So Joe, if you'd like to say a few words.
Well, I'd just like to, once again, thank the Commission for selecting me. And I would like to thank Administrator Mace. She's done an amazing job so far, catching me up to speed. And like she had said, we have went over a lot of things and, and a lot of her concerns are valid. And I will look forward to this afternoon to be with Mr. Mark Guyer and start the tour, basically this campus today. And Administrator Mace has said tomorrow we're going to go, or this afternoon down to the animal shelter. It was one of her main concerns, you know, that, that we would look over, you know, the bid process of air handlers and, and making the, the space more usable and more effective for the staff. So I look forward to going and in the pre-bid process. Now, I have brought to Administrator Mace, that it pleases the Commission, some of the ways that I could help you all save money on just one example, like possibly in the future, a furnace upgrade in the group house. We could do that all in-house, but there was just a certain, you know, specialty type tools that we would need, you know, for that. And if it pleases the Commission, we can get you a price on those tools and, you know, and you all can make the decision. But I, as you all can imagine, what it costs for you all to hire a technician, if I can recover the refrigerant and properly dispose of it, recycle it properly, it would save the Commission an enormous amount of money. So I think it would be beneficial to the Commission to look into the price of these specialty tools.
If you wanna go and do that, go for it. In my opinion, I mean.
Right. Get the price.
As you all can imagine, for the recovery of refrigerant, you need a recovery machine and you need the specific storage tanks. Of course, you need the gauges to understand what's going on in the system. So if it pleases the Commission, you know, we could, you know, get you all a price. And it's not an absorber price, it's just specialty tools that they did not have, that, you know, they did not have the certification as to use. So, but I think there would be in the long term, you know, it would be beneficial to the Commission.
Yeah. And we've discussed some other things. You know, we have some, I mean, you're always gonna have furnaces, you're, you're always gonna have air. So it's, it's, you know, this kind of stuff is, is very beneficial to you, as well as Joe and I talked about the parts. You may have a unique fan, and with the delay in things, we even talked about stockpiling some parts. So as we do our, as he goes through your buildings, we're gonna look for some areas to stockpile some stuff. Well, stockpile's not shelves and stuff, I don't know the right word for it. But I just wanna say, we've only been here one day, and this is our second day together. And I can tell you that it's a, I can already see that his credentialing will bring you all to benefit. So that's what we have on, maybe this pair of projects. One other item on that is we're going to be, we're close to presenting you a bid pack on the courthouse ceiling. This weather is just playing havoc with, with everything. But the animal shelter and that project are, I think Joe and I both agreed that that animal shelter project, we want to get on the books. So we hope to have within the next, I'm hoping within the next two weeks, we're gonna have a bid ready for you. If we, if we need one. That's another thing we talked about is we want to do as much of these projects in-house as we can. So if we need a bid, we'll do that. Perhaps we'll just be into it for materials. So as we move along, two projects we know is the roof on the, how we're gonna approach that roof on the sheriff's, and that's still up for debate. We want to talk a little bit more about that and that warehouse project. I do have a budget revision for you today. This budget revision is to incorporate the Lennox Community Center. They had received $10,000 from the state, and it's just only basically a housekeeping that we, what we do is put the revenues in and put the expenditures in and then take them out. So there you go.
We just accepted the money that came into us.
And then we turned it right back out. That's correct. It's an LED A grant, which we haven't had for some time, but it's nice to see that Preston County was awarded one. So.
They have their.
They have their money, yes. So their furnace, as far as I know, is being put in as we speak. It's done. So I, to the best of my knowledge, just any budget revision I have for you today.
I didn't see any others emailed through this room. At this time, I'll make a motion that we approve this budget revision.
It's been properly moved and seconded to authorize the budget revision as presented from Commissioner Mace. Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Yes.
The other item I have for you, and I knew, I do know that we have a work session to come follow this meeting. However, we do have an executive session on personnel, what are presented to you today or the candidates for the position of county coordinator. And we need an executive session for you to review those and give us any instruction that you have for us of how you'd like to move forward.
Okay.
Okay. And that's all I have. Do you have any questions for me?
No. All right. Before we go into our executive session, do we have any Commissioner comments? Because we are at the end of the agenda of the C executive session. And we do have a work session where we need to relocate to.
To 911.
To the 911 Center on EMS to meet with the advisory committee. So do we have anything else today that anyone would like to discuss?
LABC meeting this morning, and one of our concentrated efforts will be on the kinds of commodities that come through the county on the railroad, as well as the interstate, and a lot of hazardous materials. And so over the next several months, we're focusing on what those are, and they'll do a, we occasionally have a commodity stove, a flow study done, and that would be sitting out at night, watching the, the trains go through as well as the traffic on the interstate to see what kind of things and placards are on these trucks, because there's some really awful stuff that comes through, but it has happened. But, but that's one of the things that, that will be focused on. And since we have all these towns and areas that are affected by the, through the county. That's just a little update on some of our business with the local emergency warning committee.
Any other?
None.
I do believe, there's some meetings this week, but I am driving like.
I can perhaps.
There's that behavioral.
There is a meeting tomorrow at 1:00.
And then Friday, we do have the public testing of the election.
Yes, that's, I do have that note.
So that's, I mean, that's the big thing. I mean, so there'll be a public testing of the machine, of the voting machines Friday. I want to talk with you. Election service.
Did you want to get that? Public testing of the election equipment.
And then what's going on? There's something on the 21st.
When is the Republican?
That's it. The Republican Executive Committee's having a meeting on.
Yes.
Thursday evening.
God bless you.
Bless you. And this weather just really.
Mother nature has been very contrary.
I can tell it's changed.
To a slightly.
It's seventy-five, remember, when we come.
Yes, yes. Well, then. I don't have anything at this time, so if everyone else is good, we need to entertain a motion to go into our executive session.
So moved. For personnel.
For personnel. Correct. It's been properly moved and seconded to go into executive session for personnel. Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith? Yes.
And I'm gonna stay far away from dating.
Right. It just, it's been sneezing and coughing and that. This morning really setting off.
Is that now? No.
Where's that folder? Just for the minutes, so I can get that stuff to me.
I'm sure they'll need in here. Yeah. Sure. What they prepared today, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. Sure. Well, you want that to?
Uh, what is that?
Sarah, send me those documents.
Uh, yes, please.
Yeah. Okay. No problem.